Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakutis?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer?
Present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Stavid?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, Richard Sheradana, former carpentry teacher at Lyn Tech.
And the victims of the shooting in Texas.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Jimmy De Filippo.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Oh, move.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, will you read the communications?
Dear Counselors, as of May 4th, 2018, I hereby designate Peter M. Karen of Lynn, Massachusetts, to perform the duties of Chief Financial Officer on a temporary basis until such time as a permanent appointment may be made. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
That's the wish of the counsel. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Dear Counselors, as of May 16th, 2018, I hereby designate Richard J. Fatuci of Lynn, Massachusetts, to perform the duties of Collector on a temporary basis until such time as a permanent appointment may be made. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
That's the wish of the counsel.
Prove.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Dear Counselors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Frank Valeri of 43 Morton Ave., Saguas, Mass., as my designee to serve on the Lynn Retirement Board. Mr. Valeri's term is effective immediately. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
That's the wish of the counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Dear Counselors, I am hereby reappointing Mr. Daniel Giusono, 385 Walnut Street, to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Giusono's term is effective immediately and will expire on January 31st, 2024. Sincerely, Mayor Thomas M. McGee.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Field, would you like to suspend the rules?
Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to take a motion to suspend the rules for a presentation by Juan Gonzalez and Dulce Gonzalez of the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Juan? And Dulce, please come to the podium. I just want to say before Juan and Dulce get started, they do a lot of volunteerism in the city of Lynn. And Juan is a great role model for his kids. He is unbelievable. In the presentation, what he's gonna present to you tonight is... Lynn is the perfect place for this. We're a seaside city. We have the second-largest city-owned woods in the country. We have an unbelievable golf course, and we have a lot of diversity that's here in the city. So, with that being said, Juan?
Thank you. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Juan Gonzalez, resident of the city of Lynn and a volunteer from the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace. Tonight, along with me is Dulce Gonzalez, another volunteer.
Good evening, council members. You'll have to... I have a little cold. But thank you all for this time. Counsel President Seer, to give you a little bit of information, I'm a volunteer of the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace, which is an international nonprofit organization that is in 22 countries, and we have our local base here in Lynn. Our organization really focuses on the improvement, well-being, the happiness, and the peace of the human family and Mother Earth, and we do this through various of different programs where we volunteer, different campaigns that are really aimed at the different areas where the human being interacts and develops. Many of you are familiar faces, and it's thanks to the volunteer work that we have done throughout the last couple of years, including the work that I've done ever since I was around 12 years old. So, it's really nice to see a lot of familiar faces this evening. As I said, I continue to volunteer for this organization and one of their programs, which is called Children of Mother Earth. Under the educational program, Children of Mother Earth, we are seeking to recognize our Mother Earth as a living being, and we are looking to recognize her as a living being, not just here locally, but internationally as well. I think you have before you the resolution that we are presenting to before you, so I'd ask that you please look at it real quick while I continue to explain. Throughout the last couple of weeks, volunteers of the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace have gone locally, internationally, to collect electronic signatures from citizens from all around the world that recognize and say, like, yes, Mother Earth has rights as a living being. To give you a little bit of context of what that actually means, we all eat, we all drink water, we all have clothes, we all live on this one planet. This is the only home we have, and it's our responsibility and it's our duty to protect her and safeguard her and make sure that we leave a planet for generations to come after us. The term Mother Earth is not a new concept, and in fact, the United Nations proclaimed April 22nd as International Mother Earth Days since she provides food, water, and clothing and everything that we need in order to survive, including the air that we are currently breathing. This term is also recognized amongst indigenous people all around the world, and it is because of that that we have decided to take this term as well. At this time, I respectfully request, on behalf of the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace and our global ambassador, Dr. William Soto Santiago, that the honorable council members this evening consider passing a resolution that proclaims that Mother Earth is a living being, she has rights, and it is our responsibility to recognize them, protect them, and respect them, and not just in the city of Lynn, but all around the world. I stand before you, as a resident of Lynn as well, and I think that Lynn can really be a champion in this. It can be the first city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that passes a resolution in this category, which, once again, would be an extreme pride of our city, of what it brings to the table, but also is something that is going to be presented before the United Nations and the Organization of the American States on June 3rd of this same year. So, I respectfully request that you consider this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
Whereas the Global Embassy of Activists for Peace and Dr. William Soto Santiago promotes the worldwide recognition of Mother Earth as a living being and as such subject to the inalienable rights that must be respected in order to preserve the future of the human beings and other living beings in the common home we have, the planet Mother Earth. Whereas there have been numerous international instruments from the scientific community itself and the resolutions of the United States General Assembly where this planet has conferred the condition of Mother Earth. Whereas Mother Earth is a living being which has life and gives life, and as a free and living being, Mother Earth must be entitled to rights like all living beings, rights that must be recognized, respected, and protected by all human beings, and all states ought to be committed to implement such rights in their respective countries so that peace and security may prevail worldwide. Whereas there is a global tendency and momentum for universal principles that protect the environmental rights of Mother Earth, all to ensure environmental, social, cultural, and economically sustainable development in which the present generation's use of resource does not compromise the heritage of future generations. We, the Lynn City Council, hereby make this constitutional proclamation of the rights of Mother Earth to be taught in formal and non-formal educational settings for the dissemination and promotion of these rights in all media outlets so that progressive measures must be established in the different countries of the world for its recognition through the nations of the earth to become binding and incorporated in their internal legislations and effectively implemented through the relevant bodies.
That's the wish of the counsel.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Discussion. Mr. President, with all due respect, I can't support this resolution. I feel it delves too much into a form of religion, pantheism, and I just... I understand, I respect the young people that want to do well for the earth and how they'll describe it, but respectfully, I can't support this resolution. Right, counsel. Anyone else wishing to speak? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
No.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
We're all set. Thank you. Good feeling. Public hearings.
We have the petition of Patrick J. McGrath to construct a four-story, 24-residential apartment building on property zone in a business district at 693 Western Ave.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. President, Counselors. My name's Attorney Paul Keating, 39 Exchange Street, Lynn, Mass. We're here tonight seeking a special permit to construct a four-story, 24-unit residential building in a business zone. In all other respects, the new structure, which is over here on the right, will comply with zoning setbacks, lot coverage, parking. Mr. McGrath is going to do a fence around the perimeter of the property. The parking will be in the rear. He'll have lights looking down on the parking lot so as not to be intrusive on any of the neighbors. They are going to be marketed as condominiums. Mr. McGrath constructs these buildings and sells them as condominiums. I'm sure you're aware of the many developments he's had within the city up to this point. What we have there now is dilapidated structures, two structures, a garage and a residential building I basically used as warehouses for both of them that have been in this state of disrepair for many, many years. And would you like to tell them the type of construction, Mr. McGrath?
It's gonna be a full foundation and four stories, wood frame with an elevator in it, front stairs that go all the way up and the rear stairs to the rear parking. There will be shutters on it. The architect didn't include them, but there will be shutters, so, you know, on all the windows. But that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. And I like this plan. I like the professionalism. I like the way it's gonna be supplanting some, really, diamond in the rough area. And if the proposal is constructed with the same professionalism as this man has done in the past, it'll be a welcome addition to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Capano?
Yeah, this property has been a problem for many years, a source of complaints from neighbors. I've worked with the developer, Pat McGrath, and he's satisfied, you know, everything that, you know, that we've requested. I talked to a few of the neighbors. I sent a letter out to the neighbors. I didn't have any opposition at all. This is gonna be a huge improvement to that area, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McGrath, are there any plans for use of security? Video cameras or anywhere on the property? Are you having any type of security, any video outside that area?
We're gonna put cameras, you know, like more, like probably in the front and then back parking lot, but it's gonna be well lit.
Okay.
But there will be cameras. And also when the car is, like mainly, you know, with the entrances, the front and back.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Thanks, public hearing.
We have a public hearing regarding the bond order. Order that the city of Lynn will appropriate the amount of $5,882,193 for the purpose of paying costs for the design and replacement of the roof and windows, doors of the roof replacements at the Hood Elementary School located at 24 Oakwood Avenue, Lynn, Mass. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related to thereto, which proposed repair projects would materially extend the useful life of the schools and preserve assets that otherwise are capable of supporting the required educational programs. And for the city of Lynn, may be eligible for a grant from the Mass School Building Authority, set amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. The city of Lynn acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the city of Lynn incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city of Lynn, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to the vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city of Lynn and the MSBA.
That's the wish of the counsel. Barton? Set down, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
There's a public.
Sorry.
I go for a PTA. I think that MSPTA is very good.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I think the MSPTA.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the counsel?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
I apologize for losing my place. Committee reports, economic and workforce development. Counselor Capano?
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it again. Motion to approve. The hearing to be set down. I don't know.
Public hearing to be set down is a petition of Dunkin' Donuts at 577 Walnut Street for a sign permit.
Motion to set down?
Second.
Second.
Everybody's laughing at me, and I don't have any of that on my agenda here. So, I'm looking around the room like an idiot, and now I'm on TV talking like an idiot. So, motion to have these public hearings set down was made. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I got the right agenda. It's public hearings. I mean, our committee reports. Economic and workforce development. Counselor Capano?
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance and rules. Counsel Lozey? Motion passed. I'm not sure if the Madam Clerk would like to read the synopsis of it, or... If not, it was unanimously approved. So, motion to approve.
I have it here. It's a proposed ordinance amending the zone ordinance regarding senior parking in R3 District and other businesses.
I'll help you. Okay. So moved on the motion. The TV's still on. Ways and Means. Counsel Net?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the committee ordered unanimously to approve. I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
Would you read the transfers?
Sure. Transfer the sum of $28,700 from the account of reserve to the account of purchasing payroll and expense to fund payouts for staff retirements and class for the new purchasing agent. Transfer the sum of $6,061 from the account of reserve to the account of emergency management to fund the Emergency Operations Center during January, March regarding storms not budgeted for. Transfer the sum of $2,996 from the account of reserve to the account of IT payroll and personal buyback to fund a personal buyback that is contractual payment. Transfer the sum of $2,266 from the account of reserve to the account of the GAR expense to fund oil bills that exceeded the budgeted amount. Transfer the sum of $300,000 from the account of ISD payroll to the account of ISD expense to fund much needed repairs at school buildings. Transfer the sum of $150,000 from the account of ISD payroll to the account of ISD expense to fund much needed repairs at municipal buildings. Transfer the sum of $41,566.14 from the account of police department expense to the account of unpaid prior year bills to fund the prior year medical bills received after the close of the previous fiscal year. Order that the city comptroller be and is hereby authorized to take the following action. Certifies an available fund the amount of $1,497,075.00 as allotted to the city of Lynn by the Transportation Bond Bill, Chapter 90, for FY19. Order that pursuant to the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city of Lynn hereby accepts a gift in the amount of $3,000 from Mr. Charles Patzios for the purpose of purchasing a fire rescue boat for the Lynn Fire Department. Further, order that the comptroller's office is hereby authorized to establish a revolving fund in order to effectuate the purpose of said gift. Order that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the city of Lynn hereby accepts a gift in the amount of $2,000 from John's Fuel Service, Inc., DBA John's Oil Company, for the purpose of purchasing a fire rescue boat for the Lynn Fire Department. Further, order that the comptroller's office is hereby authorized to establish a revolving fund in order to effectuate the purpose of said gift.
Wish of the counsel was motion to approve, seconded. And before we vote on this, I just want to acknowledge John and Laurie Walsh. They put up the money for the fire boat. The city couldn't do it, and they opened up their hearts again. So, I just... That's Counsel Walsh's mom and dad, so they're great people. Roll call. Roll call.
Sorry about that.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Is there an emergency, Counsel Net?
Yes. I voted for emergency by the committee and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for emergency, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey? Counsel Lozey?
Stepped out.
Okay. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. 10 yes.
Public properties and parks. Counsel Stavid?
Thank you, Mr. President. Three items on the agenda. Committee unanimously approved the request to transfer to the prior owner and allow to redeem property of 462 Essex Street, Unit 2. The transfer of city property located at 328 Rare Western Ave. to Butters, and approved unanimously approved the request of Essex Media Group to hang banners on Lynnfield Street and Essex Street for the second sporting and recreational fair Friends of La Vares with all costs to be incurred by them. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Licensing. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you very much. We're gonna read off the licensing agenda. I think Mr. Capano's gonna help us do this here tonight. It's a little long, so stand by with us. So, we approved three taxi operators, new taxi operators in the city. We also have two livery service licenses that are new. Livery operators new. We had four of those. We also had a new flammable license, a auto repair and flammable license, a new one at 1071 Western Ave. Mr. Capano, would you like to help us with the rest of the...
We had a sign license renewal, 96 Adams Street Highland Market, 73 Bessemer Street, Linda's Critter Corral, 511 Boston Street, Top of the Line Haircut, 518 Boston Street, Mr. Speck's Opticians, 826 Boston Street Riverside 2, 229 Broadway, Farden, Inc., Richdale, 319 Broadway Century 21, 1 Central Square Dunkin' Donuts, 105 Commercial Street, Commercial Market, 141 Eastern Ave., Monte's Restaurant, 200 Essex Street, Lincoln Market, 268 Essex Street, Tony Topeco, 148 Fayette Street, Mike's Autobody and Auto Repair LTD. 13...
Counsel Capano, what was the last one? I didn't hear it.
That was 148 Fayette Street, Mike's Autobody and Auto Repair LTD. 13 Lewis Street, Lily Convenience Store, 179 Lewis Street, Perkins Property, 217 Lewis Street, J&amp;M Corp., Gin's Garden, 3133 Linway, Johnny's Market, 17 Market Square, People's Choice.
Good food.
3 to 5 Market Street, Market Square Beverage. I believe that should be Market Square. 42 Market Street, Dunkin' Donuts, 98 Market Street, USA Super 99 Cent Sale, 2 Mason Street, Jim Auto Parts, 100 Union Street, Inner Convenience Store, 108 Union Street, Michael Nalabs, Ikuka Karate Do, 465 Washington Street, Pinocchio Adjusters, Inc., 117 Western Ave., Hermes Barbershop, 437 Western Ave., N&amp;N Construction, 471A Western Ave., Luxury Auto Services, 472 Western Ave., Arsalis Beauty Salon, 707 Western Ave., Domino's Pizza, 742 Western Ave., Sally's Pub and Grub.
Counsel Walsh?
Thank you. We had auto repair and flammable license renewals, 87 Bennett Street, Westland Auto Service, 471A Western Ave., Luxury Auto Services, 1071 Western Ave., Affordable Auto Repair. Flammable license renewal, 30 Boston Street, Home Decor, 650 Summer Street, Seal Hathaways &amp; Son, 659 Summer Street, Seal Hathaways &amp; Son.
Could you speak up? I can't hear you.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Coin operator devices renewal, 421 Essex Street, Essex Street Laundry. It's a Class Four, Four Class 3, 408 Summer Street, Two Class 2. Unanimous vote of the committee.
Motion approved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? No. Okay. Roll call. Roll call.
One question.
Counsel Barton? Oh, wait a minute. Counsel Field?
Did we miss one? No, there was a... There was one license. I think Counsel Capano had agreed that he was gonna go visit the businesses.
That was 1071 Western Ave. Was tabled, so the counselor can go check out the site and speak to the owner.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Counsel Barton?
Why a roll call?
I don't know. I just feel like it.
Okay.
Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
No.
You called for it. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Counsel Lapierre?
Epstein.
Epstein. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Stavid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
New business.
Committee on... Counsel Clerk, would you please read?
She told me to read the new business? Okay. Order that the city of Lynn abandon 100...
Order that the city of Lynn abandon a 100-foot portion of Broad Street Place and convey said land to the Abutter's for nominal consideration, and order that the mayor is authorized to execute any deeds and all documents required by the law department to effectuate the above referenced abandon and conveyance. And on this property, we have a letter from the planning board. At a meeting of the Lynn Planning Board held this evening, the board voted to recommend the proposed abandonment of a 100-foot portion of Broad Street Place. The Abutter Longham Museum, aka the Mary Baker Eddy Historic House, will remain, will maintain and control this abandoned way. And the recommendation was all in favor. The second one is order that the city of Lynn grant an easement to Fidelia Garcia, trustee of Nine Green Street Realty Trust, 45 Gibson Place, Lynn, Mass., 01902, for nominal consideration. Said easement area is 72 plus or minus square feet. And order that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant of easement and any and all documents required by the law department to effectuate the above referenced grant of easement. We have a letter from the planning board on that as well. At a meeting of the planning board, the board voted to recommend the acceptance of the proposed grant of easement for the city of Lynn to Fidelina Garcia, trustee of Nine Green Street Realty Trust, 45 Gibson Place. And that was also unanimous. And the final one is order that the city of Lynn accept the grant of easement from the trustees of the Nell's Pond Condominium Trust to the city of Lynn for the general public, a perpetual right and easement to use the parcels of land located in Lynn, Essex County, Massachusetts, described as Apple Blossom Lane, Cherry Tree Lane, and Peach Tree Lane. And order that the mayor be authorized to execute any and all documents required by the law department to effectuate the above referenced acceptance of the grant of easement. And we have a letter from the planning board. At a meeting of the planning board this evening, the board voted to recommend the proposed grant of easement from the trustees of Nell's Pond Condominium Trust to the city of Lynn for the general public, a perpetual right and easement to use the parcels of land located in Lynn, described as Apple Blossom Lane, Cherry Tree Lane, and Peach Tree Lane. And that is also all in favor.
Mr. President? Motion to approve. Motion made.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Okay, and we have one more.
There's more?
We have one more. Our new business. We have order that his honor, the mayor, is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the project funding agreement and any amendments thereto for the Hood Elementary School project between the city of Lynn and the Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the city of Lynn, and to bind the city of Lynn to its terms and conditions.
Motion to approve. Motion made.
Second.
To approve, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
We need an emergency on that.
We have to do a roll call on that.
Yep. Okay, Counselor Barton?
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubid?
Yes.
Needs an emergency?
Emergency.
Motion made for an emergency?
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Staubid?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.